Good evening, everybody. We're going to open the Town of Halifax Planning Board meeting. Tonight, we have Brendan Elliott, myself, Amy Trup, Rick Mary, and Bert Gainer. We have the agenda... Oh, sorry. Planning Board meeting is recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube. The agenda tonight is a hearing which will be continued. It was for 359 Plymouth Street for site plan review and contractor storage. We have discussions and possible action to be taken on 337 Plymouth Street, which is Mary Lou's inquiring to go inside the Halifax Market in Deli. We have signatures on 314 Plymouth Street Site Plan Review, 359 Plymouth Street Site Plan Review, 0 and 314 Plymouth Street Decision Letter, and 0 and 592 Plymouth Street Decision Letter. We have bills from PGB Engineering for 0 and 314 Plymouth Street and 0 and 592 Plymouth Street. And we have meeting minutes for March 2nd, 2023, March 16th, 2023, and April 20th, 2023. We have mail from various towns and other business unscheduled that might not be listed on the agenda. We have a bill, another bill for express newspaper for 416 Plymouth Street for Kennedy K-9 Camp. It's a legal ad. And we have mail from the Bridgewater Zoning Board of Appeals. We do not have any executive sessions on this time, on this meeting tonight. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as read or any changes?
Motion to accept the agenda as read.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
So the first thing that we have here is that we need to continue the hearing for 359 Plymouth Street to the meeting on May 18th, 2023 at 7:00. Can I get that motion to be moved?
How long we set on time for that? You know, do we know?
I don't have a car. That...
Didn't we give an extension?
I know that we just looked into it, but I will write a note for Peggy to look into that. Or Peggy, don't forget to look into the extension on Plymouth Street. Was it 90 days that we gave them? I don't have that information.
Yeah, because I thought it was less than that. Then we decided we'd go to 90 just for the extra.
June 2nd, 2023 just came into my head. I think that's the day. Yeah, okay. But we'll double check that. Thank you. Can we get it continued to 5:18, 2023 at 7:00?
We continue the hearing for 5:18 at 7:00.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion for Mary Lou's to be located at 337 Plymouth Street inside the Halifax Market in Deli, I imagine where the Dunkin' Donuts used to be. Anybody here to talk about that? Do you want anybody? Are you here to talk about it? Oh, great.
I'm Mary Lou. I'm sorry I'm not very prepared. My name is Joe Murphy. I'm a chief public and I was serving as a lobby. People over here through the town, there's a lot of administrative black help shortages. So I think our experience at Board Health and stuff, the last week should come to your meeting, talk about our plans. Yes, we're planning on going to their Dunkin' Donuts, where we build in. We're hoping right now, obviously, we can draw eyes crossed. Please, I spoke to someone briefly yesterday, I don't know if it's from CBA or building, whether I have to go with a CBA or a CCA. Don't, because we exist in the property shop. Building will take out, they'll give you seats and chairs. No restaurants. And it is pre-existing. So like I said, I was advised to come attend this.
Make sure.
See if I said questions. I don't think we need to come there because we don't have seats. We just need a business certificate.
Wait a minute, are you Mary Lou?
No, I'm not Mary Lou. I actually had her come tonight. She just came back before. She asked who would take a lovely trip up here. But I'm Mary Lou.
She lives in Rhode Island, right? She lives in Rhode Island, right?
No, she's out. What's her name now? She's from Addison.
Okay.
Well, she's a truck driver. She's lived in Addison most of, after eight years. I was Mary Lou's. Spent a long time with her. She got us here just for a few days.
Were any permits or anything required? Were you opening it up? Were any permits or anything required for coolers, refrigeration, anything like that? Or are they all still there?
Well, we use Halifax Mark cooler. That will have little true refrigerators.
Oh, no Walkins or anything like that?
No, they have Walkin'.
Well, I mean, for Mary Lou's. It was specific to Mary Lou's.
We use, since we have, we call cold rangers, coolers, or the milk company, it's a laid-out cooler. Everything other than the coffee is, there's no cooking. There's no, we're not done. We have some breakfast sandwiches, but everything's all pre-cooked and coming.
What do you have for operating hours?
What would be asked?
Operating hours?
Generally, it's 5 to 9. But since COVID, we've been doing 5 to 7. It all depends on, we follow the sun. So if it's sly or longer, we stay a little longer. If it starts getting dark, you know, over time, we'll go to 5 or 6. All depends on traffic, you know? Looks pretty quiet every single time. I live in cars, so.
How about the number of employees? How many people work in there?
Well, hopefully more. Hopefully, it's going to be really busy. There'll be minimal two people working in a manager. But, you know, as I said, I hope that business is good. It could be, you know, a time to sleep.
So you're not expanding the size of what was Dunkin' Donuts?
They had a lot of space. We operate half that space.
Okay.
So, you know, that's nice that we have that extra space for storage of cups and stuff like that. But, yeah, we'll be no expansion.
No expansions, okay.
Literally, just going to fill, not total paint, but paint will cover a lot of things orange. And that's in the inside, not aesthetically outside. I also have a sign guy working on this. Not really a lot of signs that can go there. They have a lot of them on now. There'll be a little sign in the property where Dunkin' was. And probably this, you can't even see them anymore, the directional signs. There's a sign that says do not enter and do not exit. Probably aesthetically, just like Dunkin', so they can see, so cars don't try to go in the wrong way. Right now, they're brown. It's difficult, just the old signs.
So basically, they're taking the old use and just using it again.
But you're not using that common space that's over there in the very front of the building? Or you are? There's no stools or seats there, but there is a little common.
Oh, this Keno thing? No, we won't be using that.
The Keno thing, yeah. They do use it for Keno.
They'll probably keep that. We've got access to it with the employees going in and out.
Right.
But that's why it says, well, it's a counter inside. It's probably the length of your table there. It's, you know, 60 foot for customers that would come in. But, you know, the, you know, tables and chairs.
Okay, thank you.
I'll do enough.
I think basically what we just need to do is make sure that everything's all right on the site plan and they're pretty much ready for the use.
Well, there isn't any changes being done or additions to the parking lot or to the... I mean, you're not eliminating any parking spaces or anything like that?
No, what we probably will do is simply paint some lines better. I haven't spoken to the owner of the building, but there's a lap to the fence that goes right down the side of the property. Probably didn't replace that with the same consistent fence.
That's nice.
It's all in shambles.
Yep, no additions or deletions, so to speak. No additional spaces needed or being taken away or anything like that?
No, that's pretty good.
Well, when you do line the parking lot, you'll have to just look at the site plan, which you can get at the building inspector's office or the planning board's office. And it'll show you exactly how it's approved by the town to be laid out. You just have to follow that.
You can't argue where it is and stuff like that. But right now, everything's sort of worn down.
Yeah.
We just want to have people go where they're supposed to go and not go where they're not.
Nice. That sounds nice.
Hopefully.
Well, we'll make sure you get a... We can help you get a copy of the site plan so that you can see all that.
Super.
Okay, so it'll be one five left remaining. Is it going to have a drive-through?
It already did.
It already did, so it's pretty secure. So more traffic right next to the windows.
Maybe it'll...
Might be less. Might be less. It'd be less. I mean, it gives you another option. If I cut that line in half.
You already spread it out, right?
I didn't actually measure, but it looks like it's probably a 14-car queue before you pass the street.
It is.
Problem is, with our Dunkin' Donuts layout, it's the traffic comes out of there. Always says, yeah, stop.
It'll be like in the road.
We'd love to just take 2% of those cars in that. Alleviate probably the, this route and all this stuff.
That might help, huh?
Yes.
No, I'm sure that the other guys won't move across the street. We don't want to.
Well, it sounds great if we can do anything to help you, I think. I'm speaking to, we're looking forward to seeing you in town.
Everybody I've spoken to in these buildings have been extremely helpful in giving us guidance on what we're supposed to do.
That's, that's great.
I don't want to down the building. Is it Peggy?
She's in the Board Health. Yep, Peggy Seltzer.
Yeah, she seems to be running off right now.
Right now.
Running off. Busy, busy woman.
Yes, she is.
But very productive.
Yes.
Very, um, on top of this.
She is. She works hard.
Look over there, you're cold.
All right, so if you guys need anything from us, certainly reach out and we can get you a copy of the site plan. Like I said, that should help you. Anybody else have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Good luck getting all your permits.
Thank you.
Do you bet? Okay, so now we have signing of extensions and site plans and decision letters. There have been a couple of go-around this week at trying to get the decision letters for 0 and 314 Plymouth Street and 0 and 592 Plymouth Street, correct? So currently, we have a few things that need to be changed. There was a lot of things that need to be changed, but I think it works well for the most part of sharing who voted and what they voted. Having the right square footage, because on the 18,000-square-foot building on one of the letters early in the week, remember how they went for the 25,000? That was in there. So we made sure that that was taken out. And so there's been a lot that goes into these and then two at once. So do you want me to read them out loud and we can see what we need to change? You guys want to read them and make any changes? We can discuss them and then we'll send them to Peggy and I'll have it signed as soon as she sends it to me.
What do you think?
I'll just read it out loud for you.
Yeah, that's probably, yeah.
All right.
That would be on record. It'd be easier for Peggy to read it out.
So this is a draft. This is not the final decision letter. We're discussing a draft of a decision letter for right now 0 and 314 Plymouth Street. I was hoping, on a side note, that we would have the exact number for this property because it's confusing with the 0 and 314 and the 0 and 314 with the other project. Like, it would be good to have the separate numbers right now.
You would think they would, huh?
Well, we've...
Or we have, or go by petition number, right?
Well, that's the Assessor's office that puts a number on it.
That's what I mean. Like, so like, sometimes we've been stopped from writing letters until we have the exact number. But we don't have that right now. And like, this was, the A and R was done, what, October last year? So like, I'm feeling like it kind of gets confusing because some of the things were intertwined in the decision letters that I saw and we started with. And then we sent them to you guys for double checking as well. But it's been a series of issues. But anyway, so this is the draft. At a meeting held on Thursday, April 20th, 2023, the Halifax Planning Board voted to grant your petition, file number 981300, for a special permit for a two-story self-storage building with an 18,000-square-foot building to be located at... It doesn't say building, but I think building. Building should be in there, right? To be located at 0 and 314 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's map, 63 Lot 6C and 31. Are seeking to obtain a special permit for special use regulations for self-storage and rental office. "were seeking," right? So that needs to be changed a little bit because they're not "are seeking." They were seeking.
Sure.
To obtain a special permit for specific use regulations for self-storage and rental office. It did say areas light industrial use with a zoning variance given, but that's not correct. The zone is business and it received a variance from the zoning board to allow for light industrial use, right? That would be more palatable or correct?
I agree.
Okay, just making sure. I'm just, because I don't want to be the, yeah. The following are the votes of each planning board member on the application. Mark Millia's chair, absent. Amy Trup, vice chair, yes. Rick Mary, clerk, yes. Robert Gainer, member, yes. Brendan Elliott, member, absent. And the only reason that came up is because she had written unanimous. And I don't think it's really unanimous decision of the planning board. So we took that part out, okay? The planning board granted this special permit under file number 981 by RJ and RJ LLC at 0 and 314 Plymouth Street with site plan submitted and first drawn on September 9, 2022, with final revisions on March 6, 2023, with the following condition. The easement states maintenance and drainage inspections will be done twice a year plus, if necessary. It will be in a pertinent easement with the Halifax Country Club, 100 Country Club Way, Halifax, Mass., and Algea Property, 340 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. The easement will be recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds before any permits or work can be started. The hours of operation for all days will be 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The dimensions for signage will be put on the site plan for the street and the building, and they will comply with all Halifax bylaws. And there will be no outside storage of any kind ever. There'll be a 12-foot abovitie and blocked wall with algea picked stones. Blocks will be placed at the facility. Please be advised that special permits must comply with all the rules and regulations and codes of the Town of Halifax. This decision shall not take effect until, A, a copy of this decision certified by the town clerk to the effect that 20 days have elapsed since this decision was filed in the office of the town clerk without any appeal, having been dismissed or denied, has been recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds or with the Assistant Registrar for the Land Court for Plymouth County, and a certified copy indicating such registry recording has been filed with the planning board. Wow, this one's really thick. I've never seen that pop before. So a special permit was given for the size of the building. Do we think like that should be there? And then that the site plan is approved and these are the other conditions of it? Because is it the whole thing being a special permit? Or am I delving too?
No, it's just the building itself. That oversized building is a special permit.
Right, so do you think I should separate it that way in the letter? Or we should, sorry?
I think it was applied for just, what was it? The two-story building.
Yeah, two-story building.
And you make mention as applied with petition number 981. So I personally think that that covers it. You know? The only other thing is, we had talked about it with Mr. Silver over here too. And you were absolutely correct. 16710L that the... Brendan's shaking his head.
June 2nd, 2023. 103L1.
That all entry, exits, egress and whatnot cannot, has to be on the frontage. Remember how we mentioned about the driveway going into the old, old Nezarela's farm?
I'll step back so you guys can see each other.
Yeah, and she was definitely correct. It was, it has to be off the frontage.
So it's a little disconcerting when they're showing that entrance with all the aisles going into Nezarela's old farm where they want the Starbucks to go. So I don't know if that's something to be concerned about or... But, you know, I looked that up. I saw that too. And they're saying it's just, it only applies to residential, but I don't see where it's...
No, it never said anything above...
Because it's in 16728 and that's what we base all of our decisions off of. So they wouldn't put it in our area if it wasn't for us. You know what I mean?
Yeah, this was definitely ripped from 16710L. So it wasn't, you know, it didn't make mention... I think that's what the zoning board was saying, that it would only apply to residential as in, you know, common driveways, that type of thing. But then again, in the same breath too, you know, they were saying public safety-wise too, why not? You know, if you can use the light and relieve some of the pressure of pulling in, pulling out and whatnot. But then again, that's what it says. It has to, does it just become a cut-through? Or are you opening up a can of worms? It might be better to use it, you know, in the same breath.
Yeah, every time we give a variance to something, we might have to give a variance to somebody else to do the same thing. And it breaks down our ability to protect the town.
100%. It's a precedent, you know? And we do have that elsewhere, you know, the Stop and Shop does have it.
It's not the main entrance.
That's where the biggest sign is.
Like, they come across their frontage though. Are you talking, I'm sorry, I should have let you finish. But do you mean to go into Dunkin' Donuts?
To come out of Dunkin' Donuts, to go out onto the driveway at Stop and Shop.
But that's not their main entrance as far as, like, they come off the street.
No, they don't use it to go in for the drive-through or anything, no.
And all the trucks to make their deliveries through there also.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, they do. All the tractor-trailers. I've never seen a tractor-trailer go in at the set of lights. I've seen them go in, you know, to go out back and whatnot, but...
But that's their frontage, correct? Because I wouldn't care.
That's Stop and Shop's frontage. It's not Dunkin' Donuts' frontage.
So then the Dunkin' Donuts guy enters through that, which would have been missed in a previous special permit and site plan, I would have said, I would say. But, you know. I think that was before any of us. I didn't see that.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't know. It was discussed and whether or not it should be included. I don't know. It's kind of...
I mean, it's on their site plan.
It is on their site plan. And we signed and approved the site plan.
But it doesn't mean that we allow them to use that as their main entrance.
No, but it does allow them to use it, period. If it's on the site plan.
So what do we do about that now?
Then it's on the site. I don't know. I don't know. They still, I think the only way we could probably get around it is when the business, whatever it may be, goes into the old Nezarela's farm stand, that we put a restriction on it or a limitation or something or... Because he said it was, Mr. Silver did say that we discussed it and that's why they put it on there was for public safety reasons. And I don't remember that at all.
Because they have people that are going to use it, whether they have permit or not.
See, that's it in a nutshell too.
That's it.
Unless, unless it's a Cape Cod burn and it would be a granite curb so they couldn't just quote-unquote "use it" without a curb cut, you know? But it showed it on his, on his...
I think it's all, it's all a part of the grand scheme for the, for the other establishment they want to put there. This whole thing will all work together in one, pretty much.
Do you want to mention 16710, right?
16710L.
In this?
June 22nd.
In this?
Yeah, but if we've already signed the site plan, there's nothing we can do about it.
Well, yeah, and we have, and it does say in here that they have to follow all the Halifax codes and bylaws. And it does, the other one still has to come through. And I guess we'll just have to be really tight on that site plan to make sure that they understand that that can't be done.
But the only kicker is that you can't have a substantial change than what you applied for. They showed it on the site plan.
But they're not the applicant of the other one.
No, no, no. But it's their driveway. They just showed a curb cut, you know?
But you mentioned that anyway.
It was mentioned during the discussion.
And we did this...
I think that they sound like they're pretty confident that it's going to happen, you know? So I don't know if they know something we don't know.
The urgent care slash...
Sidewalk slash auto.
Autozone.
See what happens. Well, like you said, I don't, I don't know how you make mention of it now. It's kind of, you know, it's kind of after the fact.
Well, we, we did mention 16710 and we did mention that they can't use that as their main entrance. And we did talk about it with them. And it does say that they have to follow all of their regulations and codes.
Isn't that a big reason why we denied Starbucks to begin with? Was one of the, one of the reasons right there. Not the main reason, but it was one of them.
But I think the way around this is they're going to say, yeah, it's not our main entrance. If people want to use it, they're going to use it. But that's not our main entrance. We're not going to promote that.
Right, we have a, there you go. They want to use it, that's on them.
Right, it's not. If I would, that's what I would say. I mean, I'm trying to give them the answer to the test, but I'd just say.
So they're going to put a an enter sign here or an exit sign here or something.
I think that was the difference between the urgent care and Starbucks. They wanted to use that main entrance, which was going to create a public safety.
Yeah, and that's what they're going to comply with with the current zoning was yes, our egress and is and everything is on our frontage.
Right.
You know. Because what is it just on the farm stand alone? I think there's three curb cuts there.
Yeah.
Never mind further down, you know.
Well, including the one that's now on another lot, three curb cuts, right? Because it's the one that's on the divided lot that we is this one here, petition nine eight-one, we'll call it self-storage, right? And then there's the next one down and then there's a whole area parking and then a next one down. So there's only going to be two on that other lot. Right?
Thinking.
I walked the sidewalk so many times, it's in my head, yeah.
But there's nothing that you can do about this into these letters because it's already decided. So at this point, it's to your point, we just discuss it at the next point. We don't even know what that is yet, so.
Right, and that's.
It's all speculation at this point.
Yeah, it's all speculation.
Okay. So.
But it's good that.
Yeah, no, make sure that when it does come up, we go, hey, everyone.
We can remind each other.
Nineteen sixty-three, we talked about that.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, sorry. It was minus thirteen, so we'll look at that.
Okay, so I'm going to pass this and you guys can tell me whether or not you think that you see anything else.
And what do we need on the Amy Do if she fixes that? Do you need us to swing by and sign it that, you know?
No, apparently I'm the only one who wants to sign it.
Okay, I didn't know if there was a second.
But I didn't want to just.
Oh, yeah.
Do it without you guys, to be honest.
All this fault to Burden's, right?
I'll just give him a minute to go over this if you don't mind. I'm thirsty now. Um. Solari. Solari Acting Building Inspector Solari.
What about him?
That's who it is.
Oh, that's the new building inspector?
Ask a question. If I had a resident that had a question and they needed to call a building inspector just to ask who would they call?
I'd call Peggy and have them it probably she would refer them to them out of the case, probably.
Solari, right?
Solari.
I just was making sure I was saying the correct name, yes.
Does it look good?
Because it's not on our website. Solari. Sometimes Caroline still Caroline Voight is still in the office of the building inspector doing secretarial work. So you could probably even contact her. So you guys are good with this?
Yeah, that's fine.
But you understand the little rewarding down there? All right. The next one, this is again just a draft of the decision letter for zero and five ninety-two Plymouth Street. At a meeting held on Thursday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the Halifax Planning Board voted to approve your application three zero zero for site plan review submitted on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two by ADAG Realty LLC and Malden Redevelopment LLC. A commercial building and associated improvements located at zero and five ninety-two Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass assesses map sixty-one lot four and four A. This approval was based on a set of plans prepared by Outback Engineering dated June second, twenty twenty-two, grading and drainage plan submitted January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, with a final updated layout plan submitted on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. This property is zoned commercial. The following are votes of each planning board member on the application. Mark Millius absent, Amy Troop, yes, Rick Mary, yes, Robert Gaynor, yes, Brendan Elliott, absent. In making its decision, the planning board reviewed the criteria listed in chapter one sixty-seven twenty-eight H of the Code of the Town of Halifax as part of site plan review. The planning board further relied on a report dated March seventh, twenty twenty-three from peer review engineer PGB Engineering LLC and being satisfied that the bylaw requirements were met. The planning board included the following conditions. Owners will participate with the other businesses located at the intersection, the town and DPW, with the possibility of adding future stoplights if their business impact is more than the one car an hour or causes safety issues as discussed. No eighteen-wheelers will be allowed to park overnight. The zero and five ninety-two Plymouth Street parking lot spots easement will be a pertinent to the building at five will be an appertinent easement to the building at five ninety-two Plymouth Street. Hold on, that needs some rewording. The easement, the appertinent easement will be recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds before any permits or work can be started. The walkway will follow all ADA approved guidelines and regulations. Any change in use, the scope of use or the location of the business will require a new or modified site plan review and approval. Any relief requested by the applicant, which is not expressly granted here under, is hereby denied. Please be advised that the applicant must comply with all the rules and regulations and codes of the town Halifax.
Did we need to vote on the first decision letter? Or we could.
We'll go.
Or to vote on each one or you're just going to do both of them at the same time? Or does it require a vote at all?
Well, we don't need to have a vote, but we can certainly feel better if you want to because you know how I roll about that stuff. I want us all to be on the same page.
The only thing that when I was reading that over with the streetlight, it I thought it was just like part of a discussion if it ever comes up in the future. We're not making it a part of the requirement that they.
No, we are.
So that at some future time, if they decide they need a streetlight?
If their impact if their impact is more than one car an hour. So like that their use is more not an office, that there would be, you know, like the like say, for instance, the neighbor across the street saw like five cars an hour leaving there on a constant and consistent basis, then they're not they didn't report what they were doing and they would participate in part, not full of creating a light there.
Yeah, but that that to me doesn't make a lot of sense because if the whole reason you'd want a streetlight is if they're doing more than a car an hour. How are you going to get the other businesses to kick in if they if they're the reason why there's more traffic? The other businesses say, yeah, sure.
Of course, but that's what he said and we were just stating that. But we did talk about it with him.
He said participate, you know, in the discussions.
So even if it's with the Halifax, the town of Halifax and we can't get in, you see, see what I mean? Like he could participate in it. If you guys have any changes on that.
Are you taking that Amy to mean like a financial participation?
Yes. If he has any further detriment on that. I mean, that's kind of what we're here for is to make sure that the the traffic of our town is not impacted overly by the businesses that we allow in, you know, like that's one of the things that we do. It is what we talked about. It is one and we if we don't put it in writing, we lose it. I mean, real estate, if it's not in writing, it's not a contract, doesn't exist.
The other thing is too, I do follow on the discussions that the neighborhood across the street were adamant about not having a street light there. I I didn't see agree with it. I thought it would only be helpful to have us, you know, a street light there to alleviate the traffic and the backup, but they were adamant about, no, it'll be even worse with a street light.
In my opinion, you'll never see it happen anyway, you know.
Well, I don't know if we'll never see it happen.
Well, maybe, but I mean, just putting it all on his back is a. You're not going to get everybody else to go along with him and say, oh, yeah, sure. You get two cars an hour set on one, so we'll help you pay for a street light, you know? I don't see that happening.
I understand what you're saying completely, but.
It's going to be just a giant crap show.
But he'll get involved in it.
Yeah, well.
Not in writing. I mean, it keeps him in the in the contract of like having to participate. We don't have that with any of the other businesses right there, but if we were.
It doesn't say participate, it says participate in discussion.
It says participate along with the other businesses located at the intersection, the town and DPW with the possibility of adding a future stoplight. Doesn't say it will, it won't.
Didn't say he has to pay for it.
If their business impact is more than one car.
I don't think he's going to reply to anything anymore. You know, he, you know, he did the traffic study and everything was cool there, so I think he was kind of shocked when you brought that up to him.
But it's one of the things that the residents were upset about and talking about, so we have to talk about it.
Yeah, they were very upset about it.
And it's one of our jobs. I mean, the chapter talks about it. I mean, that's, you know, excuse me.
Well, he agreed to it, so I guess it's, you know, he just he just wanted to not have to come back again, so.
Yeah, he did ask you, he did say at the podium, what you want me to put the light in and then you were very specific, very clear about it, to at least participate in it, you know, and he said, yeah, I participate in it, you know, as long as, I mean, I think where was the street light that we did, we looked up for, I think it was the one at Stop and Shop. You're talking like three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
It's a piece of change, you know.
I mean, he was given, you know, variances from the conservation. He's, you know, given good historical, I mean, he's building basically within the buffer. Anyway, but I don't think Emile's going to have anything more than just the offices in there and I don't think it will. I think he really does want it to be that, but we have to cover our residents. Anyway, it's part of the meeting, so we'll just put it there. And then the rewarding of the easement issue here, the zero and five ninety-two Plymouth Street parking lot spots apartment easement. Like I was trying to do what she did with the Alder and the Country Club is link those properties together with the apartment easement. So I'll just have her name those both properties that the easement is continuous forever because that parking needs to remain with the barn is the sentiment of what we're trying to get across in that. Which is basically what has to happen, right? So other than that, are these letters okay with these changes?
I didn't really see anything with that one at all.
So we're okay with the changes that we just discussed of having her just rewrite it and sign and send?
Right.
You okay?
Yep.
And then the site plans as soon as we get them in for with the the updated signage on the three fourteen, the petition nine eight-one, we needed the sign added to that site plan and then. Emile asked us, so we should get in there this week and I'll let you guys know like about the site plans.
The three fourteen one, the storage place, I thought it was on the site and we found a little, was it?
No, that was in the book.
It was, it was located on the plan and the book showed up picture of, you know, so.
And it complied with square footage and all that stuff.
Yeah, the sign was good.
It was in the flip book and so he was just going to.
It wasn't on the site, but the site plan showed the location of the sign, but it didn't actually have a detail of the sign.
So they're going to get us that and then we can sign. All right. Okay, next. Oh, that's the three fifty-nine Plymouth Street.
Well, they're not here, so we're not.
Yeah, we'll read that at the next meeting. Thank you, though. No, of course. Right, because that would be, right?
I mean, they're not even here, so whatever.
We'll read that at the next meeting. Laura Gibbons. Thank you. Next we have bills for PGB Engineering. Who wants it?
Of course, ours. Those pay for this is for the peer review, right?
Yep.
Peer review number twenty-three F five services rendered for a total of one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-three cents paid to P G D Engineering LLC.
How much do you have? I have eleven thirty-five twenty-three.
Me too. Is there two of them?
Okay, so there's two. So there's one, other one the same, okay. For invoice one fifty-one A for one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. And invoice one fifty-one B is three hundred and ninety dollars per grant over one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Do we need to vote on them separately?
No.
Okay.
Can I get a motion? So that is that a motion to pay those? Can I have your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then. What do we have here? Oh. And here is. I'll get to that for a second. You're excused. Do we have any more? All right, I'll go over there in a minute. There was another bill for like Halifax Express that was like at the end of our, oh, here it is. Might as well put that.
Kennedy K nine can.
Right?
Uh, we have a bill add number one four two nine nine for the express newspaper in a total of ninety dollars. Kennedy K nine can.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's a little heavy on that side. We'll just put that in here, okay. So Bert, funny thing, we have three fifty-nine Plymouth Street. We just need to sign an extension. So they filed a petition on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and it was extended to June eighth, so I was a little off, forgive me, twenty twenty-three. But the public hearing meeting date was May fourth, but we just continued it till May eighteenth. And she's asking us to sign, so is that all right? Because we already said that we were going to do that, so.
We're good.
And then we have. Give me two seconds to see what I'm looking at here. Steve Doms was scheduled to appear on May fourth Planning Board agenda, but he hereby requesting an extension to appear at the May eighteenth hearing. Can we get a? We already did a continuance for that one, right? So we're just signing this.
Which one's this?
Doms, Casco, so sorry, the other is zero three fourteen, which is why I was saying about the SS's numbers, it's like the same number, we need to change that. Maybe we I'll run into the SS's office on Monday and see if they can get that on their agenda.
Well, I don't know if they can change change it if it doesn't exist, but you have a lot, a lot number and whatnot, so maybe that's the only distinction we have. You know, zero to three fourteen, but you know, page and lot is what designates one from the other, I would imagine.
But when they subdivided the lots and they got recorded at the Registry of Deeds, so some lots became that one lot and then the other lots became the other, right? Then there could be a number, right?
You would think, effectively, a number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll just sign this. And I think. Right? Thank you. All right. So we did bills. All right, our favorite time, meeting minutes. Meeting minutes are from March second, March sixteenth and April twentieth. March second, might as well do the farthest one out, right?
I didn't see any changes or deletions.
Do you want to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March second, two thousand twenty-three as presented.
All right, all of us were here that night, so can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, do you have any changes, anyone? Any comments, changes?
I just kind of had a question on the second page, one, two, three, four, five lines down.
Second page?
The second, yes, second page. It says things, the sentence is things change and there seem to be more questions that need to be answered. I have no idea what reference this letter is making to. You know, that's the sentence. I have no idea what that's.
What's it about?
What's it about? Or am I missing something? Just disaster. I don't even know.
A member of the public was concerned about what businesses are going up on the top and bottom floors of the building signs. Is it going to draw kids? It's not an easy street to cross. Things change. I think it was, I think, I think it's probably somebody like who was at the podium statement and they were probably thinking, I think I remember, I feel like it might have been Mr. Steele and I feel like it was, I couldn't be wrong, but this is what I remember, like something about how is it going to draw kids across the street and if it is and what if these things change and then that's happening? Do you remember that?
Yeah, I remember him saying that.
Yeah, so I think it was just.
Yeah, it's just.
His nervous talking or.
Yeah.
But it wasn't like one of the board members.
No.
I don't remember it being any one of us.
So do you want to stick in there? Oh, wait, well, it kind of says a member of the public was concerned, but it doesn't state where it stops.
Yeah, I just for my own thing. Oh, and the, no, I don't think eliminate it, I just want it for the own benefit, we all knew. The last page, I believe, you know, where it says Halifax zoning board of appeals?
Yeah.
It says vice chair troop. I don't think that's you.
Yeah, no, it's not me.
I don't think that's you.
So let's cross that out.
Yeah. And that was all I found.
Okay, cool, yeah, well, all right. So with the change of the zoning board of appeals vice chair not being myself, can I get a motion to accept the meeting minutes as read? I mean, as written.
I'll make a motion to accept the Halifax Planning Board meeting minutes of March sixteen, two thousand twenty-three as corrected.
Perfect. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's not going to hurt anything because we all voted yes, but you weren't there that night.
I had to read that a couple of times when I saw true vice chair.
Second, I didn't notice that, I was like, what? Second is going to be from you, because Brendan wasn't there that night.
All right, I'll second it.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That was the March 16th. Oh, this is the April 20th, yeah, sorry, yes. Did you go over the, these minutes, Bert? The April 20th, sorry?
The April 20th one? Oh, yeah. I didn't see anything on that. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of April 20th as presented.
Pertinent easement should be a pertinent.
Where are you?
Um, second page, bottom in the motion. It says pertinent and not a pertinent.
Okay.
But that's the type of easement, it's not a pertinent easement, it's an a pertinent. All right. So with that fraction, I'd be okay with it?
As corrected.
Okay. Guys, can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got the same Troop, now we can gain on that.
Oh, is it the same again?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, as far as attendance, I thought you meant that there was like another error on, yep.
Okay, so put you on another board.
Justin. No, thank you. All right. So we have mail from East Bridgewater, Pembroke, but furnace lane, so it's not really abutting us. Hanson Alden Way, Stringaway, Gray Lane. It was a decision. And other business was from Bridgewater. A retreat lot in Auburn, so I don't see anything else. Anybody else have anything to discuss? Oh, Chris?
Mr. Corrigan.
How are you?
Chris Williams on 29th Street. Just to clarify for future projects, a special permit for a drive-through?
Yep.
I thought that was tied to a business, apparently, tonight, that's tied to the location. So like Dunkin' Donuts moves out, and a new business comes in, they want to reapply a special permit for a drive-through, this dog mail application.
It depend, it depends who applies for it. If, you know, Dunkin' Donuts came in and applied for a drive-through, but in this case, the owner of the property applied for the drive-through, because it went from Dunkin' Donuts to, so it ran with the property, as opposed to, it was part of the deed.
So it stays with the application for this particular
Right. I do believe, Chris, some of them are different, they don't, that's probably the general way it works.
So you're saying if like Dunkin' Donuts bought the building and then sold it, then another property or another business that came in, you have to reapply, because now it's a different business, a different owner of the building?
If it was a different owner of the building.
But if it's just a, if the business is leasing space, then the building owner keeps
Is that, is that the same owner of Dunkin' Donuts, is it?
Uh, no.
No.
No, it's a different owner. If the property's been sold since Dunkin' Donuts moved out
Oh, I read about it.
To the wrong location. But I mean, it was, it would hurt to do a little digging of that.
Going to dig, do you have anything in writing that you want to share? I, like, literally, like, I want to double check the wording on that.
No, I'm just curious.
No, I know, me too now, like, I'm like
And I know, I, I'll find, find a drive-through, maybe a future
So, I would be thinking that it could go either way, and I'd want to read the writing, I would want to read the actual law, but like, if we delve, so, without the actual law sitting right in front of us, the thought process that I'm having is, when a building has a drive-through, right? And then, say, X business goes out, and they sell the building, but there's still a drive-through, but then they'd have to have a special permit to allow it again? Seems like it might be a hefty little thing. I think a special permit, if they don't act upon it within two years, is null and void. But if it's built, then I don't know how we can exactly take it away.
Yeah, that's, that was my next point. How are you going to say, if I'm leasing the building, I'm taking my drive-through window with me? You know, but, but in your instance, like with a gas station, two years, I don't even think it's two years, I think it's a one year, if it's vacant, the tanks and everything, underground tanks have to be removed.
Oh, yeah.
You know, but I, but a drive-through, it, you would think it almost
I guess you, Chris's point, we talked about the change of ownership of the building itself, and, you know?
I mean, like
Unless any workers apply for a re-availability, just in case
Unless they kept it, yeah, just something to dig into, exactly.
Yep. Very good, it's always good to, I'm going to be looking for it.
Chris McFancy asking some questions?
All, I mean, like, here we are, have the special permit section, so here we go. Let me just see if I can scan anything right here real quick.
All questions are to be submitted by writing on his day off?
Like, you did
I was going for it.
I thought it was just a quick answer.
Why is that here?
Special permits to hear and decide an application for a special permit for an exception as provided by sections of this chapter. Such permits shall be applicable only to the use of the property for the purpose specified and shall not vary or relax any other provision of the chapter. So when we give a special permit, we're not allowed to give a waiver on any other parts of the chapter. I mean, this is going to be, I mean, a couple pages long. I don't mind reading it.
At home?
I'm scanning, I'm scanning, I'm scanning.
Call me.
Should there be an email tomorrow?
Okay.
What do you update at the next meeting?
Yeah, right. I make a motion to continue this discussion to May 18.
Is that a motion for adjournment?
I mean, I, I respect, I mean, we don't need to make a motion to adjourn, that's okay. We don't want to shut it down, but like, let the shot clock go off.
Delay again.
Does anybody else have anything left to discuss? Who knew it could be so entertaining here for planning?
Wasn't what I expected, and I had heard it from the advertisement.
No?
What do you mean, Mr. Corrigan? What did you say, sorry?
I was going to say
He was here for the contractor's story, the
For the purpose.
Oh, oh, 359.
We're good, all right?
Yeah, it was.
He said we're good, motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.